Order of view Phase Three located in the northwest corner of Willow Point Way and Nautical Mile Drive. The applicant Legacy Development Company Incorporated is requesting preliminary tunnel site plan subdivision, EPod permit approval, and LWRP consistency recommendation along with a public hearing associated with the proposed construction of six two-story townhouse style buildings consisting of a total of fifty-six residential units and one community center on a thirteen point five acre parcel located in an MHR medium-high residential district under sections two sixty-nine dash eleven, three thirty dash four, and three fifty dash fourteen of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, you said everybody. Good evening. I'm Chris Nadler, general counsel for Mark Four Enterprises. With me here today is David Cox, our design engineer from Passero Associates. Chris DiMarzo, our owner and president of Mark Four will join us in a few minutes. He just texted he's stuck in a traffic jam. We're here in front of this board at long last. It seems like it's been a while since I've seen you all. We have been hard at work with town staff going hammering out issues, but I just want to go briefly again over the project history, where we've been, where we are now, and where we'd like to go, and go over briefly some of the comments and changes we've made over the last several months, and then answer any questions. David and I are both available. As you know, decades ago, this project was approved for seven-story mid-rise on this parcel. It was reduced to a five-story mid-rise, and we obtained permits from the DEC for docks and moorings down on the bay. And then earlier this year, or last year, we came in for two, three-story buildings with ninety units. We met with this board a few times, we met with the zoning board a few times, and we talked to town staff, heard from our neighbors, and reduced the project significantly to fifty-six townhouse-style apartments. At the, in the fall of last year, this board declared its intent to be lead agency and commenced Seeker coordinated review, and we appeared in front of the zoning board of appeals and received required variances for the project, including front setback and another variance that you needed. Since that time, we've been working diligently with town staff, your town engineering staff, highway sewer department, planning department, and responding to comments about drainage, potential wetlands, stormwater management systems, dock permit conditions, which in December, Mr. Artuzoz spoke with DEC and realized that, or we realized that there were conditions of the dock permit that was issued, I don't know, two decades ago, that the DEC has been renewing for us every five years. We're not planning on building docks as part of this application, so what's just in front of you is just the subdivision application and the site plan application. We also talked to town staff about construction phasing, worked out a detailed plan that you have in front of you, as well as various easements that the project requires. Tonight, we're seeking from this board a negative declaration of environmental significance under Seeker, an LWRP, local waterfront revitalization program, determination of consistency, an EPod permit, environmental protection overlay district permit, subdivision approval, and preliminary site plan approval, as well as final site plan approval. I believe we've worked for over a year with town staff and this board, as well as the zoning board and the DEC, and our, and the boards have all the information necessary to issue those approvals. So now I'd open it up, ask the board if there are any questions that we're happy to answer.
Okay, well, with that, we can just start, I guess. Any, first of all, anybody got any concerns or questions? Derek.
I'd actually like to talk to you about the guy from there. I'm reading through the permit. He had some things to remove, like legacy development.
Okay. Can you speak up? I can't quite hear you.
So DEC, when this legacy development has been renewing this permit every, or every tenures, or ever since it was first put in, it's done at their request, and DEC is coming doing it in administrative work.
Okay.
And so the reason this is related directly to this project is that, appendix B of this permit clearly says that parcel two, which is included in this project, shall be conveyed to the Genesee Valley Land Trust as a condition of the permit for the docks. And so my question to you is that, well, it's not on lot two, it's also on lot three on this. I guess my question to you is that, why hasn't that property ever been transferred?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said this earlier. We're not building the docks as part of this application.
No, I understand that.
Oh.
But you have been actively renewing the permit ever since it was issued. So you have the understanding, you know, that the property was supposed to have been transferred. It says on here within forty-five days after effective date of this renewal. That property has never been transferred in accordance with the permit.
I don't understand your question.
The question is, why haven't you not transferred the property as a condition of this permit?
Because we haven't built the docks, and we're not planning on building them. If we, if we do go to build the docks, we'll work that out with the DEC.
If that's the point there, because as condition of this permit, you have been actively renewing, and I think as a board, you need to notify DEC that this permit needs to be It is not a valid permit because if you go through with this development, you're building on a neighboring property, you're merging one of the parcels into the main, where the buildings are.
Oh, I, okay, understood.
You're subdividing the whole parcel, you're doing away with one of those parcels that you committed to transferring to the Genesee Valley Land Trust. So this permit is null and void.
No, I think that's.
From now until the future.
Sorry, hang on. That's misleading. We did not commit to convey that to the Genesee Land Trust. We committed to, as part of a dock permit, if and when we build docks, that we'll deal with the DEC on it, but I don't want, I think that's a little disingenuous to say we've committed to convey a parcel, when that's not even a little bit what we've done. If, as part of a dock permit, excuse me, as part of a dock permit, we, we would have to do that. We're, as I've said a couple of times now, we're not building docks as part of this application.
I understand that, but you're making it to a condition that this permit, you have been actively renewing, you cannot meet anymore.
Understood.
Therefore, this permit would become null and void based on any action we take to make it very difficult. The DEC must be notified that you are pulling the permit once again. Because looking through the record, this permit has been, as part of the development at the beginning, it was pulled. It wasn't going to be part of any project, and then it reappeared at some point, probably when we did Phase Two of this project. The map that we have is in accordance with what's in the permit itself. So you have a development that you've been actively renewing the permit for, on the understanding that, okay, once the docks are built, you're going to convey the property. Now you are before the board with a development that makes this permit null and void. Which do you want in the future? Do you want this development, or do you want to notify DEC that you're pulling the permit ever again? This permit you've been renewing.
We're seeking a site plan approval and subdivision approval for this project, but I can't stop you, Derek, from notifying DEC of anything.
Why wouldn't you notify them?
I don't understand the question. I understand your point.
Okay, you're, so you would, so why wouldn't you notify them? It would change from mine and want to pull this permit, why you have been renewing the permit, when you've had no intention, I guess, of transferring the property that was negotiated as part of the permit.
Again, that's a little disingenuous to accuse me of that, but I understand your point. Thank you.
I think that's, the attorney is just questioning, he's saying, do they have any intention of building the docks? My point there would be no. There is no intent to build the docks currently, so, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but where is that?
So the permit, the first was.
Excuse me, where's that coming into this if there's nothing going on at this point?
So this permit must be pulled as part of this project.
So can that be a stipulation put into the resolution?
Then we'd have to make sure it's followable.
Okay, so if we put that in the resolution with that.
We should notify the DEC to terminate the permit.
Okay, so, so you feel that the town should notify them of this, correct?
Of termination of the permit.
Which can be done, correct?
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
All right, so.
So in the future, it's not like we're going to, that everybody can come back and say we had a permit, because the permit's not available.
So part of that, and since today I have people could be that they notify it, and the town notifies that there is no application or it's rescinded with the dock. I can't see holding a project up like this if something is minor, so that's just not fair.
We're comfortable with that condition, Derek. Thank you.
If this, if this was just coming in, this thing's been going on, we've been beating this thing to death for ever, and somewhere along the line, I mean, it's been open, again, this is a public hearing, so if there are people here to speak, we will open it.
So I guess the other object, yeah, is dealing with the weather, the new wet regulations. We do have a letter from Passero that says they want to take some pictures. Within the letter, they talk about doing a desktop renewal of the location of wetlands, which specifically under the new regulations says you can't do that, you can't rely on those methods. So it has a delineation, an actual delineation been done, and an application submitted to DEC for jurisdictional determination.
There has been an application submitted to DEC. Nothing in the regulations says you can't do, quote, "a desktop delineation." We have worked diligently with town staff, including town planning board attorney, town attorney, town director of development, town planner, and town engineer and assistant town engineer on that matter. I think our most recent submission shows that there aren't, there isn't a wetland in the, potentially the location that may be identified on the EAF map or whatever the substitution, and that is under the new regulations.
Do you have the new regulations saying, yeah, can't rely on that information anymore? So you're saying you have submitted to the DEC. Yeah, who received a copy of the submission?
I don't think you get a copy of the submission. We have some information about it. I'm sure the town has whatever it's submitted.
We just didn't get an email, email saying that they received it.
When, when was that application filed?
A few weeks ago, when the case, the issue came up in January, right?
Yeah, probably. I don't know the exact date.
My, my understanding is under the new regulations, there's a transitional period, and it's only effective if this, an application was filed before January first, otherwise the new regulations apply. Like Derek mentioned, I concur with that understanding, and even if you go onto the web portal to DEC, it says that it's only for reference, and it's not comparable to an actual JD application or actual physical response back from DEC indicating if a wetland delineation is required or not. But they're in transitional period, again, according to six six four point one as a section. The only time that we're granted a transition period is if you have a DEC wetland permit in hand, a final environmental impact statement completed, or a site plan approval by municipality. So otherwise, you fall within jurisdiction requirement of applications. So you performed a site visits, was there GPS data collected, has that been submitted to DEC, or did you just file a JD and waiting for a response from, from the DEC?
So I think I can, I can, we can, we can get around those, those details. No, no GPS data has been submitted to the DEC. So what the actual regulations say that took effect in January one is that we have the option of submitting a jurisdictional determination request. They do not require a jurisdictional determination request as part of this review. This board is, is tasked with addressing and evaluating wetlands, so impact to wetlands, excuse me, as part of your seeker process, but this board can do that based on New York State laws interpreted and promulgated by the court system and New York State TALMA and New York State seeker regulations, based on the information you have. The read, the, the way the regulations read, not the way the DEC keeps talking about it, but the actual regulations say, if it's a wetland, then you may need a jurisdictional determination. So it would be predicated on it being wet, so what we've shown you is that there's no area that could be a wetland.
Well, correction, that there's multiple criterias to delineate a wetland. It is not just if it's saturation, it also consists of the hydrology of the soil and natural vegetation plantages that are existing there, as well as microbial environment conditions.
Exactly. Yes, absolutely. I, as my boarder speaker, is it wet or not? I didn't just mean is it wet, I meant, did somebody who's a, what's her name, an environmental biologist, go out there and say, could this possibly be a wetland? And she said, no. Was there a delineation? No, we're not saying that there was, but that's not required at this stage. Now.
Well, I guess a point of clarification, if you can assist me with, is if we're tasked with determining if there's a wetland or not, but information wasn't provided to justify from DEC or from a delineator that there is in fact, or is not in fact, wetlands, so how are we going to make that determination without requesting JD or wetland limitation?
I could probably take the word of an environmental biologist who's employed by Passero Associates, who's professionally licensed engineer, stamped all this, all the items in this application. We could probably go look, does it look like it could be a wetland? No. But I think that's self, self-evident. If, you know, if the DEC regulations can confuse people, I understand that, but I think hopefully we've worked that out with your legal advisors and your town staff to make it clear that that's not necessarily an impediment to making a seeker determination.
I mean, I just wanted to agree with that. I think it's the applicant's responsibility and diligence to provide that information since the applicant is requesting a seeker.
Thank you.
In something like this, keep moving forward, subject to these items being resolved, that will go.
Do you agree? Yeah, I guess that's, that's the question, is, is are you willing to have a conditional approval subject to the DEC coming back with their opinion relative to jurisdictional determination? Also, the DEC has allowed for a streamline of this approval if you have a third-party person who had, an expert who has performed, which, which you had with Passero. So I guess the question would ultimately be the legal question, which is why I think I might, why I'm being asked, is whether or not some type of.
Condition?
Conditional approval, condition to having that DEC review and approval, and, and ultimately deter, determining the DEC determining that delineation's not required and that it's not a wetland. If you put that in the approval, what's your position in regards to that?
Seems that would be fine with us. I don't think it's necessary, but to move this along, of course, we'd, we'd be happy, we'd be appreciative of this board if you was moving along like that. You know, if it's a wetland, we can't build on it. The DEC would take us to court before we got, you know, to the second day of construction. So that's what the DEC's enforcement mechanism is, is not this board. That being said, if that's the condition you want to impose, that's a little bit.
And to follow it up.
Yep.
You were seeking the DEC's determination.
Yeah, we've submitted a board comment.
And obviously, what you just said is important for this board. You wouldn't want to build on something without getting that.
We couldn't, yeah.
That's jurisdictional.
Correct.
I mean, I, I do, and again, I apologize for losing word. This is my second, second one here. I, I understand there's history with this project, and I understand that there have been a few years involved in this technical communication. I don't understand why there's a need to vote a conditional negative declaration on something that can be reached up to DEC, has gotten clarification, and we address at the next meeting, if, if a JD needs to be submitted, or especially as us being the lead agency for this application. I don't understand why there needs to be a rush into even putting a conditional portion language into it, and I honestly, I'm not even sure we're getting to conditional approvals and a negative declaration under seeker. But my point of view is it wouldn't hurt to have a call to DEC and get that clarification, product issuing conditions for approving a seeker process without having it in hand as the initial.
So how long would something like that, do you feel, to resolve?
If I, I feel like a phone call and a response, could be within a month, complete a filing of the JD, is my understanding now, for the two to three days, you should be getting back an email saying you're meaning to perform delineations or not.
Well. So if this was ju, if this was done along the same lines, but just making these items, we do have a few items now, there's no question, but just making subject to these things being resolved, this is, to me, this is a very small part of this whole project. The project, to me, is the development, the traffic, the, where there's a wetland, there's a puddle on the bank, I couldn't care less, to be honest, you know, and let the DEC argue that.
But again, we're the lead agency in this. The DEC is a consultant party to us as lead agency.
Yes.
Essentially, we're granting approval prior to getting feedback from the consulting agency.
So granting it, making it subject to them agreeing with it, if not, null and void.
So on January sixth, twenty twenty-five, the DEC responded to the coordinated review effort by the town under seeker and did not say that the jurisdictional determination would be required. It's a nine-page letter, I read it again this afternoon, so I think that's your answer. Nobody here works for DEC, they can carry their own water, you don't have to. We're going to have to deal with DEC, obviously.
Keep in mind, with the new regulations, the transitional period does not apply in this case, so we have to follow the new regulations since we don't fulfill the criteria of transitional period.
Okay, we've got a long agenda here this evening, and I'm not going to spend the evening just talking about DEC on this thing.
Well, I would.
This is, excuse me.
I understand what you're telling, Tom, and you made a statement earlier that I think is actually very concerning. You know, DEC with this new regulations is, put it firmly, that they're going to protect the wetlands in the United States, and by you as a board member, saying you can care less about the wetlands, that doesn't fit.
Stop ranting, please stop your show.
You made, you made a statement that the reason, the reason.
You're taking a literally word for word.
Regardless, one thing, it doesn't matter what it is.
My point.
It's accepted that a conditional.
Derek, excuse me a second, please. My point there is simply, this is a small part of this overall project. They've had people survey it already. Their determination is, is no wetland there.
They have not done a delineation.
Okay, but there, this is something that I'm saying, let them move forward with that, let them do what they have to do, let them deal with the DEC instead of us here. Let them resolve this issue, you know? We move forward with it, subject to them getting your okay from the DEC. This, this is no different than things we've done in the past.
I don't believe we can do conditional, because we're waiting for some more technical information, and according to what the seeker, the seeker handbook, that's, you can't do a conditional seeker type of mission. If you're waiting for additional technical information. It's specifically said that four or five places within the document, but it's not allowed.
Mr. Nadler, will you?
I, you, you, I don't have to say anymore. If this board can take such action as it wants, and can condition its decisions, that's very clear. If, I don't think this board, if this board as a whole is comfortable moving forward, you can do so. Derek wants additional information, and Mr. Basic wants additional information, I think they would have to convince a couple other board members that they wanted additional information as well. At this point, you know, we would ask that you open the public hearing, take comments, and move forward.
I just want to clip all I'm asking is for a month, all I'm asking is for a month in order to get feedback from DEC. That's all I was asking.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so what we'll do a little bit, for anyone that wishes to speak, just ask them to go up to the microphone, give us your name and address. Anyone who wishes to comment on this? Again, this is a public hearing.
I did have some just questions about the actual design.
Hold on, let me get a response from the people. No one, no one wishes to speak? Okay, if that's the case, then we're going to, if this side closes the public hearing for a word view. Okay, go ahead, Derek.
I just had some, a couple of questions on the design. Josh, if you want to maybe pan to those, like one of the areas, at the entryways of all the road accesses, if you could incorporate stop signs? I didn't see any in, in the drawings. The, there's two areas that are called out for snow removal, there's concrete curbs there, maybe do transition.
Sorry.
There's two areas that have snow removal indicated within the vicinity of the community center, but they have curbing in those areas, if you can do transitional curbing, or maybe remove those so that you can plow the snow in those areas.
Yep.
One of the snow storage areas on the south side is very close to a residential patio that's going to be right there, so, you know, we, we usually have a high amount of snow. I just don't think that that area is realistic for snow storage, it's going to be right up against the residential property there. The retaining walls used have ornamental fencing. There are a location, building one specifically, Josh, in the southwest, there's a ten-foot drop after that retaining wall, coming from that garage, you know, I know I'm being overly cautious or concerning, but if you have a rolling car, will that ornamental fencing hold the car? Maybe consider using like a timber guardrail in that, in that area, just because it's a ten-foot drop after that, that goes down. I was wondering, just on the grading on the northwest corner of Building Six, how that transition's happening with all the retaining walls, if we can get a clarification, just how that's all being tied in on the northwest side.
Hey, can we show, I don't know what you mean.
Yeah, so you're going to get a retaining wall here, but no additional grading or no additional topo to the northwest of where that retaining wall butts those contours.
Yeah, they're, they're tying right into existing grade. So whatever the existing grade is, that would be the bottom of the wall elevation.
I had another comment, just if you wouldn't mind, about even the landscaping plan, it seems that you have some prominent tree specieses that are going to be within your pipe network, deep roots, they're going to go right into drainage structures and everything that you indicated there, just consideration given for a long-term success of, of the drainage structures.
Right, in terms of the landscaping, you said?
Yeah, in the landscaping plan, there's some larger trees, like right there, PN two, there's two of them that are PN, and they're right along the line of the drainage structures. So just if you might take a look at that. I guess this has been a skill, but if you look at between Building Four and Building Five, you have a garage, so somebody's going to pull out a garage at night, turn on the lights, and they could potentially shine right into the window of the second story of Building Five. Again, if you relocate those trees or move them, just keep that in mind, if you do, you know, something for a bit. know, something for visual or maybe to break up the light, you have that scenario in a couple locations, even on the east side, between Building Four and Three, and then also between Building Two and Building One, where you have, you know, vehicles that are going to be exiting the garage with potential lights on. One thing to note, you have existing vegetation along Willow Point Way, is the intention to remove that vegetation or keep it, the existing trees that are there?
All the ones that are shown are meant to remain.
Okay. There's, I believe, two that are in the driveway if you're removing them, and then if you wouldn't mind indicating how you're going to protect them, because there's some grading that is being, that's occurring at more than six inches, so it could impact, maybe consider removing them, it might damage trees. There's existing hydrants on Martin Drive, Mark Time Drive, sorry. The silt fence that you're proposing is in front of the fire hydrants, if you wouldn't mind moving those behind the fire hydrants so that they're not spearing first responders. And then I would recommend to just add silt socks, you know, inlet protections along all the existing structures, along Willow Point Way, Mark Time Drive, and McHewan Drive. Again, easier to, you know, silt sock or inlet than having to re-flush the entire storm drain later on. That's all I have.
You good, Chris? You've got all those ones?
Well, you've got all those, and you're in? Okay. The one with the fence on top of the retaining wall is the only one that I think we might have a problem with because we've got a design going, I don't think it's going to be easy to stop a car with anything, and if a car goes over that, it's going to, we can pull it out, it's not going to be in good shape, but I think that's the only one that I would say, could we not have that as an absolute condition, but could we explore the possibility of doing that? Sure. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else in the board members?
I just have one question about the underground stormwater detention structures. They appear to be in the road.
Yes, they are, they're on the road.
You know, this particular site, when I do see the outline of the parcel, so those basins are on a different parcel. They're on the parcel that's owned by Phase Two of the project, heading down to the light, or down to the bay. So I guess what I don't see on here, maybe a good point now, is the easement that would be associated with that. You know, similar on the other side, you said there's an easement that's for the detention basin that has the four bay and the sand filters, I would expect also to be an easement for those items.
There already is an easement in place for the sand filter.
Yes.
The stormwater chambers will have an easement over it, and that, those stormwater chambers are really to treat the drainage of Phase Two.
Sure.
So.
Where is that easement showing, is a question?
Oh, that was a comment from town staff, so that'd be added to the plan and filed before we get mylar signatures.
Okay.
I believe all that, Keith, you guys, you reviewed all that, you were correct? You guys were pretty comfortable with it at this point?
The board has received our letter, correct?
I'm sorry?
The board has received our letter, correct?
Yep. Actually, in two different letters.
Correct.
Okay, anyway, board members? I think just going through this, I mean, we've answered, I think, every question.
Tony, I just have one more, sorry, just because they're brought up, the stormwater, so the sand filter that's on the southwest side. I guess there's a road that's next to it, is that, what's the anticipated rating of that road that you're proposing there? Is it H S twenty? Is a bumper truck going to be able to pull onto that road to maintain potentially that sand filter or?
So I think it was a gravel access path, so that, you know, trucks or whatever could get down there.
I mean, would you be able to do a vehicle tracker, just to look if a bumper truck can make it down there?
I'm not sure you would want to take a bumper truck down there, just the existing path to get down there is somewhat steep, so I'm not, I don't think you'd want to take a bumper truck down there.
So how is it going to be maintained? Just curious, what's the maintenance schedule for it, I guess, over time, since it's?
Yeah, I mean, if they had to get it cleaned out, you'd do it with an excavator.
We've been through this thing several times on different issues, and I think one of the biggest things was on McHewan Drive, I think you resolved that, you're putting some bushes along, a burn along there or something?
That's correct, we enhanced the landscape and.
Protecting neighbors on the other side.
Yes. I think it's significant that, you know, this was a group of neighbors that, you know, really was concerned, and now you got a public hearing that had no, no powers.
Yeah, agree, there's a lot of engineering detail and stuff in this, and that's why the town engineers have been working on this thing for several months now also, along with the other thing. I know there's, Derek, you've had issues with the thing with the secret and so on, with the D E C, I'm going to propose that we move forward with this project, I want it gone and done. Whatever issues need to be resolved, let that happen with the D E C, that's where the main issues are. And this thing, when was it, January first, they came out with a new rule that kind of put blotches here and there and said this is potential wetlands, so you can tell us that it isn't, we'll get back to you in a few months, is that basically the?
Well, it actually doesn't say that, it said, that's what everyone seems to think, it says, the actual regulation says, here's some blotches, if you want a jurisdictional determination, we're happy to do that for you, and here's the process by which you can do that. But yeah, pretty much there's blotches and I believe someone earlier today used the phrase, it's clear as mud.
Yeah, that's my point. And I think that this board, most of the board anyways, the whole process into that is as clear as mud, but anyway, I would like to propose that we move forward with this project, and the only deal is sent to the applicant, so we have to deal with the D E C and any other agency, I think the town, is that correct? Correct me, Keith, you guys, you reviewed all this stuff, you've got the engineering and some outstanding engineering.
Tony, you have a letter from the town of Engineering that says, we have comments that do not hold up the application.
I'm sorry, I hear.
You have, there are comments that do not hold up the application, they will be resolved prior to mylars.
Okay, that's, even if we may. All right, this is going to be a lengthy little deal here now, we've got actually six different resolutions to make, there's one, let's just say it's a secret. Because we have to declare as an unlisted action at this point, so I'll read it out, bear with me folks, I'm sorry, it's going to take a little getting through them, but anyways, let's see, these are all prepared by town engineers, and so whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board is considering an application for preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine approximately three point seven acres with an approximately nine point four parcel, acre parcel, to create an approximately thirteen total acres, is three subdivision blocks, R two B and R two C flat, prepared by Passor Associates, dated July of twenty twenty-four, and on which combined parcel is proposed to be constructed five ten-unit and one six-unit townhouse-style apartment buildings, clubhouse building, and associated infrastructure, as shown on the most recent site plans prepared by Passor Associates, and all relevant information we submitted, submitted at the March fourth, twenty twenty-five applications, and whereas the planning board is reviewing the short environmental assessment form, the A F, and this is the A F, this is part one, and this is prepared by the applicant, well-related to the application, and all other relative information. This was submitted as of March fourth, and whereas the planning board determines the said action is classified as an unlisted action under Part six one seven of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas the planning board declares its intent to declare itself as a lead agency under secret and commence coordination review, this goes back to that, I believe it was the night, correctly, Josh, from what, I think it was November twelfth?
That's correct.
Right, November twelfth of twenty-four is when this actually started, and along with that, we do have.
By now, you've probably seen.
We do have the certificate to that also, and let's see. Well, whereas the planning board determines that it is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of significance, therefore, under the secret regulations, and whereas the planning board has given consideration for determining significance is set forth in section six one seven, point seven C block of the secret regulations, and the information contained in the E A F part one, and whereas the planning board has completed part two and three of the environmental assessment form, whereas the planning board under the provisions of Part six one six of the New York State Environmental Quality Review has given thorough and comprehensive evaluation, the impacts likely result from the proposed action, now therefore be resolved with the planning board hereby declares itself to be the lead agency for the purposes of completing environmental quality review as required by New York State and the secret regulations. It is further resolved that the planning board has reasonably concluded that the following impacts are expected and result from the proposed action when compared against the criteria found in the secret, section six one seven, point seven C. There will be, there will not be a substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground or surface water, there will not be large quantities of vegetation or water removed from the site or destroyed, action will not be substantial interference with the movement of any resident migratory fish or wildlife species as a result of the proposed action, there will not be a significant impact upon habitat areas on the site, and there will be, there are no known threat or endangered species or animals or plants. C, there are no known critical environmental areas on the site which will be impaired as a result of the proposed action. D is the overall density of the site is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and there will not be any increase in use of either the quality or type of energy resulting from the proposed action, and that there will not be any hazard created by human health. G is there will not be a change in the use of the active agricultural lands to receive any agricultural use under tax exemptions, or that will also result in lots of ten acres of such productive wildlife. And A, there will not be a larger number of persons attracted to the site for more than a few days, or compared to the number of persons who would come to the site absent the action. I, there will not be a created, there will not be created a material demand for other actions that would result in one or more of the above consequences. And J, there will not be changes in two or more of the elements of the environment that when considered together result in substantial adverse impact. And K, there are no two or more related actions which would have a significant impact on the environment and be a further resolved, but based on the information and analysis set forth above in the supporting documentation referenced above, the proposed action will not result in any adverse significant environmental impacts, this is subject to the coordination set forth below. It be resolved further that the planning board does hereby make a determination of non-significance to the proposed action, that the planning board chairman is hereby directed to sign the short environmental assessment form, Part Three, and issue a negative declaration as evidence of the planning board's determination. That would be the motion, need a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, is it?
Mr. Pichami?
Aye.
Mr. Maltham?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Gasket?
No.
Mrs. Maltham?
Aye.
Okay, along with that, then, that would be, should we put a note in there that the applicant? Being frantic with the D E C resulting in outstanding issues, this is.
Are you abandoning the resolution?
No, I'm not, I'm asking a question.
As we should, I don't know.
Don't have to, right? All right, well, you're not, all right, that would be the resolution from the secret. I think we've got to do a subdivision approval of the D E C. You got a copy of that?
Yep. Whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board is considering applications for preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine an approximately three point seven acre parcel with approximately nineteen, nine point four acre parcel to create an approximately thirteen point one acre parcel, as shown on the three subdivision of blocks R two dash A and R two dash C flat, prepared by Passor Associates, dated July twenty twenty-four, and on which combined parcel is proposed to be constructed, five ten-unit and one six-unit townhouse-style apartment buildings, a clubhouse building and associated infrastructure, as shown on the most recent site plans, prepared by Passor Associates, and all other relevant information submitted as of March fourth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the planning board has completed a formal review of the proposed subdivision, the site plan applications are compliance with the implementing regulations of New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas the planning board has determined the proposed action to be an unlisted action under Part six one seven dot six, B four of the secret regulations, and whereas on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, the planning board made determination of significance and filed a negative declaration, thereby concluding review for sort of secret. And whereas on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, the planning board conducted a public hearing that was duly advertised according to law, and in which all persons' interests were heard, now therefore being resolved, the planning board hereby approves the proposed subdivision.
So a motion, you need a second?
Second.
Have a second?
Mr. Maltham?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Gasket?
Yes.
Mrs. Maltham?
Aye.
Okay, that would be, you, the environmental protection overlay district, is a resolution for that, I guess.
I got it. So whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board is considering applications for preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine an approximately three point seven acre parcel with an approximately nine point four acre parcel to create approximately thirteen point one acre parcel, as shown on the three subdivision of blocks R two B and R two C flat, prepared by Passor Associates, dated July twenty twenty-four, and on which combined parcel is proposed to be constructed, five ten-unit and one six-unit townhouse-style apartment buildings, a clubhouse building and associated infrastructure, as shown on the most recent site plans, prepared by Passor Associates, and all other relevant information submitted as of March fourth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas a portion of the project is or may be located within the environmental protection overlay district two, steep slopes protection district, because portions of the project site contain or may contain areas within fifteen percent or greater slope, and are located on the boundary map attached as appendix one, with town code chapter three fifty that shows. and are located on the boundary map attached as Appendix 1 of Town Code Chapter 350, as shown in. Whereas applicant has requested that the planning board issue an EPAD development permit in accordance with Town Code 350-9B2. And whereas a public hearing has been held on this matter and whereas the planning board has considered the effect that the proposed regulated activity will have on public health, safety and welfare and the protection for enhancement of the fragile, unenvironmentally sensitive, steep slope areas within the town. And whereas the planning board has considered the standard set forth in Town Code 350-9D5. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board does hereby grant an EPAD development permit for the project.
Okay, um, the attorney is just giving me a couple of things that we discussed that we should probably add in there. Can you just add this into that? You ready?
I want the EPAD.
Yeah. You want to keep this for, yeah, okay, I'll keep this for, okay, all right, nevermind, that's, that'd be a motion. You have a second? And a second, I'll-
I'm sorry, who's second?
Please do.
Okay.
Mrs. Maltman.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Gardina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
No.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mr. Gaskin.
No.
Mr. Pichani.
Aye.
Jen, that's it, we'll do it, revitalization.
Whereas the town of Webster Planning Board is considering the application for preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine an approximately 3.7 acre parcel with an approximately 9.4 acre parcel to create an approximately 13.1 acre parcel as shown on the re-subdivision of lots R2-B and R2-D flat prepared by Pastoral Associates, Associates, the date of July 2024 on which combined parcel is proposed to be constructed, five, 10-unit and one 6-unit townhouse style apartment buildings. A clubhouse building and associated infrastructure as shown on the most recent site plans prepared by Pastoral Associates and all other relevant information submitted as of March 4, 2025. And whereas the proposed project is or may be located within the town of Webster's coastal area as defined in Town Code Chapter 331. And whereas town staff has prepared a coastal assessment form on the planning board's behalf in accordance with the Town Code Chapter 331. And now therefore be it resolved that the proposed project is consistent with the LWRP policy standards and conditions set forth in Town Code 331-4G.
Is that the motion, do you want your second?
Second.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mr. Gardina.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
No.
Mr. Gaskin.
No.
Mrs. Maltman.
Aye.
Mr. Pichani.
Aye. All right. Slow but steady, remember. All the issues there. All right, all right, then I'm going to make a motion for a preliminary approval for a water view application. And as whereas the town of Webster Planning Board, can you folks hear, I don't know. Can you hear back there?
Barely, yep.
Barely, really, let me, let me get a little bit closer, I'm sorry. And let's see, whereas the town of Webster Planning Board is considering applications for preliminary and final site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine the approximately 3.7 acres and, uh, with the 9.4 for a total of 13.1 acres as shown in the re-submap on lots R2B and R2C and a flat prepared by Pastoral Associates dated July 2024 and on which combined parcels is proposed to be constructed, five, 10-unit, one 6-unit townhouse style apartment building, a clubhouse building and associated infrastructure as shown on the most recent site plans prepared by Pastoral Associates and all other relative information submitted as of March 4, 2025. Whereas the planning board has completed a formal review of the proposed subdivision and site plan applications in compliance with the implementing regulations of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the town planning board has determined the proposed development to be an unlisted action under Part 617, 6B4 of the Seeker regulation. And whereas on March 4, the planning board made a determination of significance and filed a negative declaration ther- thereby concluding, uh, the review pursuant to Seeker. And whereas the planning board conducted a public hearing that was duly advertised according to law and which all persons interested were heard and now therefore be resolved that the planning board approved the preliminary site plan with the following conditions and I'll give a few of those that I've got right here. Those would be the standard for preliminary and make those subject to, okay, subject to all PRC comments, subject to a letter of credit posted with the town of Webster, subject to all conservation board comments, subject to Monroe County Water Authority comments, uh, subject to determination of the zoning board, uh, which the applicant has received the necessary variances. Uh, address any land to be conveyed to the town if applicable. Address any recent subdivision approvals of adjacent lands if applicable. All the improvements shall be constructed according to specifications of the town of Webster. All roadway construction to be in accordance with the specifications and regulations set forth, set forth by the town of Webster. Uh, all site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the town of Webster. Preserve all mature trees on the site where possible and mark said trees by the developer's engineer prior to the commencing of any site work. Uh, comply with any requirements of any state, county and town agency. Address drainage, lighting, signage, landscaping, buffering, burning and snow storage. And let's see, the landscape, hardscape, site accessories and associated finishes, uh, grading design for the development must be prepared by a New York State licensed landscape architect. The final landscape plan shall bear the seal and signature of the landscape architect. Approvals are subject to the drawing number and what is it? That's I lost it there.
There's C102?
Derek, Derek brought it up, yes, C102 and, yeah, project number, well, project number is, is that you can read it? Okay. And, uh, that's it, that's, motion for preliminary approval.
Second.
And motion in a second.
Mr. Pichani.
Aye.
Mr. Gardina.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
No.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mr. Gaskin.
No.
Mrs. Maltman.
Aye.
Okay, we've got to do a file.
Just saying, I said C102, maybe it should be C204?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number on there, it's, C102 is the one we're looking at, but there's a project number. Well, I'll give it to you, it's 2024, 3903, point 0002. Okay. Got it? All right, then we'll move forward for final approval.
I'm making a motion for final approval.
I'm sorry?
I'm making a motion for final-
I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, let's see, final approval, this is final approval for the, uh, water view subdivision. And this is whereas the town of Webster Planning Board is considering applications for preliminary and final uh, site plan approval and subdivision approval related to the above referenced property to combine approximately acres. And, uh, and I, well, I can read, basically the same as the full, I skipped that a little bit there. You had a copy of it. And, uh, and whereas the planning board has completed a formal review of the proposed subdivision and site plan applications in compliance with the implementing regulations of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the planning board has determined the proposed development to be an unlisted action under uh, Part 617, 6B4 of the Seeker regulations. Whereas the, uh, on March 4, the planning board made a determination of significance and filed negative declaration thereby concluding the review pursuant to Seeker. Whereas on March 4, the planning board conducted a public hearing that was duly advertised according to law and which all persons interested were heard. And whereas the March 4, the planning board completed a review and granted preliminary site plan approval. And whereas the planning board has compared the final site plans with the approved preliminary plans has determined that said plans are consistent and all conditions have been satisfied or will be satisfied prior to signatures being affixed to the final site plans. That's an important part right there, so, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board does hereby grant a final approval with the following conditions, and I'll give a few of those. And we'll make that also subject to, uh, project review committee comments, uh, and make this subject to any parks and recreation fees that the town board would impose on this project, I don't know how that fully works, but that's up to them. And subject to all preliminary approval conditions. And make it subject to all applicable governmental fees. Subject to department or public works approvals. And significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on March 4, 2026. The conditions of the preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover sheet, the final design plan, so that, that's something we want to make sure you do. All, all the approvals are on the cover sheet that has drawn. And let's see. The engineer for the proposed site shall provide a letter of certification of all proposed work uh, was completed as per planning board resolution of final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. A letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection, certification of the site. Uh, all stormwater facilities are to be constructed first. Uh, downspouts to be connected to the stormsters will leave that, actually subject to engineering approvals, that'll be part of. Because I don't know how the layout is and how the, you guys can deal with that. And all downspouts are, I'd say, subject to resolution and final approved minutes. And approvals are again, subject to the same drawing number. And that's, that's it for final, now, wait, before I say that's it, is there anything else that we need to put in there? Anything you feel are missing?
Nothing I can think of.
Huh? Nothing I can think of, Josh, and do you feel anything else?
No.
You're familiar with it, okay, everybody's all right with that, and so that would be my motion for final approval.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Pichani.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Gardina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
No.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mr. Gaskin.
No.
Oh, Miss, Mrs. Maltman.
Okay, with that, I guess we've completed the move of process for this application. I know it's been long, there's been argues for everyone, there's been a lot of issues. Uh, and again, I've reiterated, I think, uh, the biggest thing here is DBC stuff and and it's always a big issue and holding a project up, let the applicant go in battle. That's out of our, my expertise, that's for sure.
Mr. Pichani?
Yes.
Quick question for you, can I see the town, do you need Part 2 and Part 3 of the Seeker? The completed Part 2 and Part 3 of the Seeker?
It, it, you have a third?
I, I have it.
You got it, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
See, I don't understand why you're so adamant and so fighting it so much.
I'm not fighting it, your resolution said that the planning board completed it.
Yeah, that, actually, actually-
Considering the resolution, I would like to see it.